League of Women Voters Rochester welcomes you to our first in a series of online events entitled, Know Your Local Government. Tonight, we'll be getting to know our city of Rochester local government through the people who serve in it. My name is Anna Frohling and I'm president of LWV Rochester and I'll be moderating this evening's event. LWV is a volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. I want to thank LWV members for organizing this event. We have four speakers tonight and each will have 10 to 15 minutes to tell us about their roles in city government. And at the end, we will have questions. Our four speakers are Allison Zelms, new city administrator, Brooke Carlson, newly elected council president, Nick Campion, Ward Three Council member, first elected in 2014, and Sarah Strauss to speak on behalf of youth involvement. She's a senior at John Marshall High School, executive member on the Rochester Olmsted County Youth Commission, and a youth representative on the Rochester Library Board. Welcome all. I have a few housekeeping tips. The Zoom meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our LWV Facebook page and website. Everyone was admitted with your cameras off and your microphones muted. We encourage you to turn on your cameras if you feel comfortable, but though your microphones will remain muted. We will have questions at the end. Please enter your questions through the Zoom chat box. It's a green icon on the bottom of your screen and LWV members will be monitoring questions and passing them on to me. If you, and also, this will be at the last part of the evening. Also in the chat box, you will find league information. You'll find links to our Facebook page, our website, and our email address. We'll also include the link for the Rochester website, City of Rochester website. So if you wanted to contact any of the speakers that are speaking here this evening, you'll find their contact information there. So we'll move on to the portion of our program where you get to meet our local Rochester city electives and also people who work in the government. I want to begin with Rochester City Administrator Allison Zelms. She'll give us a brief overview of the role, span of authority, and issues that Rochester city government can impact along with how the city is financed and where the money is spent. Welcome Allison.
Well, thank you so much for having me, Anna, and the rest of the League of Women Voters and everyone that's attending today. I really appreciate the time to kind of introduce myself to the community and share a little bit about the organization that I now call home, the city of Rochester. So I'm very excited to be with you tonight. You know, when I think about local government and share that with people, I think the simplest way to describe local government in general is as sort of like a publicly held company. And so when people relate to that, they relate to having shareholders, which would be all of the citizens and property owners of the city of Rochester. Then you have the Board of Directors, so the city council and mayor. In Rochester, the mayor plays slightly different role, a little bit more like the CEO with a lot of signature authority and some checks and balances with veto authority. Uniquely, in Rochester, the mayor does not vote, but does participate in policy dialogue and actually also has oversight of the police department. So that's a little bit unique compared to some cities based on our charter. The city administrator and city attorney are appointed by the city council. And then the city administrator collaborates with the mayor and council on policy direction. The rest of the city employees report through either board or directly through a department head to the city administrator other than the police department. So the main thing that the city administrator does is really organize all of the day-to-day operations of the city in partnership with the leadership teammates that I work with, who have a lot of expertise, years of service, unique perspectives, a huge role in being able to make Rochester a wonderful place to live, assure that it's a place where businesses want to locate, can thrive, and where people are able to live their best life. So I work very closely with the leadership team in delivering those day-to-day services from snow plowing, which I was so excited to see happen again this week after the beautiful weekend we had last weekend. You know, the public safety services from building safety to police and fire. And then, of course, we have a lot of development that's happening across the city. So our development services and infrastructure team with community development and public works and the roles that they play, maintaining all of the miles of streets that we have, the water and wastewater plant, work closely with Rochester Public Utilities through their board and through our coach bar, the executive team member there. And then the library and park services through their park boards and the executive leadership that they have. So it is really the chief administrative officer operating the city. And another key component of that is making sure that things not only run smoothly, but they run according to budget. So always checking back in, making sure that we're doing that in a way that meets the objectives of the city council because they're the policy centers. So the mayor and council are really that very high-level overview of the community to say, what is our mission? What do we do as the city of Rochester? What are the most important services that we can provide to make sure that we're meeting our values and our foundational principles? And they also set forth policy. So how are we doing that? Is that something that we're going to do through expanding services at the library? Through expanding services with public safety? Or should that be done in a different manner? What does our zoning and our development map look like? What is our growth management policy? Those very, very large overarching things that predict the future of the city of Rochester over a broad span of time are those very large policy issues that the city council takes action on and the mayor takes action on. And the staff's job, our team's job with the many years of expertise we have, is to really set the table, to bring forward ideas, to share the pros and cons, to work with the community, and also talk with our other partners to understand what are the things that we are doing well, what are the things that we aren't? What will be the impacts of shifting this policy or this service level? So the council is very well-informed and we've done our due diligence. So the people trust our judgment when we bring things to the city council. So I view that as really the role of the city administrator and coordinating all of the work of my teammates throughout the city, whether that's from tree trimming and how we do that effectively, all the way to the policy for growth management and really informing that well so that we don't just grow the city of Rochester, but we're doing that strategically in a way that is sound over time so that we are sustainable and resilient from a perspective of financial need, but also sustainable and resilient from the perspective of the type of growth and development that's necessary to support the people that live here and the businesses that exist and/or will potentially come to Rochester in the future. So that's kind of the very high-level version. You can always check out the City of Rochester Charter for the detailed version. But that's sort of the nuts and bolts of the city administrator's job. One of the very important things that we are just kicking off that the city administrator also participates in bringing to the city council in partnership with the team is the city's budget. So I tried to share my screen, but I'm not ready yet. Hold on one second, sorry. I knew this would happen. Too many tabs open. All right, here we go. Now we'll do it right this time. So if you can see on your screen, I'm showing you the city's budget in brief. And so this is something that we put out annually and this is the budget in brief for 2021. One of the most important things that we do every year is establish our budget, which is the guidelines for how all of the financial resources and people resources really that we have in the city have those come together to deliver those services that I was talking about so that this is a great place to live. Many of the services that we provide are things that would be very difficult for any individual to do on their own for any reasonable cost. For example, when I mentioned water and wastewater, those are things that are quite costly to do on your own if you had to figure that out lot by lot and also have very significant implications to the environment if we don't manage those in a collective way. One of the things that I think is important to focus on is that when we're looking at the budget, we are always making sure that we maintain our stable bond rating. So that bond rating in Rochester is a AAA bond rating, which is the creditworthiness of the city of Rochester. And when rating agencies look at this, they look at the types of decisions that we're making. So last year was a very good example of that for cities across the country. Whether we had enough reserve to be able to smooth out any impacts, the choices made to either reduce the budget or adjust revenue. And there's not really a right answer. They want to see that we're actually making these decisions and bringing forward ideas and also that we have the financial capacity to pivot and shift without taking on huge debt or having huge implications to the city. And so I'm proud to say, although I can't take credit for it, that the city of Rochester was just recently reaffirmed as a AAA-rated city. And that has been true for 50 years, which is the longest in the state of Minnesota. And so it's something to be very proud of and also to protect. So that's something that we look at. We go through a process that we've started now that includes a lot of input. And the reason that it's quite a long process starting now and not adopted all the way till December, so we work on the budget almost the entire time we're in an actual adopted budget, is because it's quite large. So if you look at the 2021 budget, which is still significantly smaller than prior years, $472 million of that is, that's the entire budget for the city, including RPU, the Rochester Public Utility that the city of Rochester operates for electricity and water. Then we have operations as a component of that. So those day-to-day operations, keeping things moving, the maintenance of things, moving snow, all of the people that you see out providing service, the debt service, so that's what we're able to finance for those long-term projects to make sure that we're continuing to maintain the service life of our streets, of our buildings, of our water and wastewater plants, which are very intensive capital items, all of those things. And in part, we also do that through our capital improvement plan. So some of this capital improvement plan is paid for through cash, through other various available resources, our partners. A number of the things that we do, we rely on federal dollars for because they're eligible. And then also the debt service, which allows us to carry that out over time over the life of the facility that we're improving. So importantly, the general fund, we talk about a lot in city government and in Rochester. And that's where a lot of the action happens that you think about when you think about a city. There are a lot of, it's a very personnel-intensive fund because it's highly focused on operations. And we do rely a lot on license fees. Of course, we also rely on various revenues, interest income. We do rely on state shared revenue. So the state does have a local government aid formula. Rochester unfortunately oftentimes sees a challenge there. And last year, we saw a large reduction and we anticipate another large reduction this coming year. And then the largest portion of the general fund is our reliance on property tax. If you look at all of the operating revenue for the whole city, that whole $400 million, we do have a lot of other things that we rely on. Those charges for service are primarily utility types of services. The ad valorem tax is the property tax, the intergovernmental revenue from the state and federal partnerships that we have for the services that are eligible. And you can see that although the property tax seems like a very large number to the whole operation of the city, it isn't drastically significant because of the span of services that we provide from that water, wastewater, electric utility, the airport, all of those other things that we do as the city of Rochester. And so all of those comprise the remaining $348 million of the budget beyond the general fund. So those, you know, stormwater utility and all of those things are very capital-intensive. They have a lot of maintenance and they're, but they're very important to the integrity of the city of Rochester and all of the land and property that is built here. So one of, I imagine, many people like to know about the property tax. It's one of the hottest topics we could talk about at the city. And so, of course, the city of Rochester is not the only item on your tax bill if you are a city of Rochester resident or business owner, own property here. If you're a residential home, the city of Rochester is about 37% of your tax bill. And of course, their Olmsted County School District and the Housing Authority also are a part of that. And then it's slightly different makeup for commercial and industrial property owners. But that property tax is very, very important. So while $81 million sounds like a lot, maybe not as much in relationship to $460 million, the property tax still is very important for those day-to-day services that are provided. So you can see it's just shy of 60% over here of the general fund is property tax. And so it's very important for things that are actually funded there. And when you think of the general fund, you should think of things like public safety, police and fire. You should think of things, things that, well, I'll go down to where you can think of it actually. Public works. So it's all of those things you see out on the road. The vast majority of that general fund is public safety and public works. So just close to 75% of that general fund are those very basic services that are really important to the community, fleet maintenance, engineering, street infrastructure, all of those things that keep us going. And then a smaller amount is general government. So that's keeping sort of all of the operation happening, the planning and zoning so that we have proper use of land next to each other. The city clerk's office, your elections are funded from there. And then another small component with the music and, excuse me, civic music, arts, economic development, and administration. But there are other components of the general fund, but that large component of that 60% is that property tax. The other thing that the property tax funds is parks and recreation directly and the library. So the 60% you're seeing over here is not the entirety of the property tax. This portion of the general fund that's funding police and fire and all of those things I described is only about 70% of the property tax collected. The remainder of the property tax over here is primarily going over to support parks and recreation and the library and also with that new portion of the levy that was extended through referendum. So those are a lot of services that people expect to have and businesses expect to have in the city that they live in. And it is a very important thing that happens every year. It became much more difficult in Rochester and will continue to be difficult with some of the pandemic impacts. Obviously, $472 million sounds like a lot of money. Probably sounds not like very much money to the city council that had to make the adjustments to reduce it by almost $102 million. So that's quite a large reduction that was necessary to not have a levy increase during 2021 outside of that parks referendum that was approved. We didn't increase the parking ramp and transit rate increases. The city was, as I pointed out, able to maintain its credit rating doing that. We pushed out some liquor license fee increases that had been anticipated in order to provide relief and eliminated some of those so that we could keep businesses going. Obviously, airport traffic is challenging right now with travel. We're still supporting that operation. It's very important as we come back online and also to our business partners that depend on it for aircraft operations, cargo, and medical supply. And then we did see a huge impact and we're still seeing that on the lodging tax. So that is still down about 50% from last year. And actually, the most recent report that I saw for sales tax had us up slightly over last December for sales tax. So people have been busy doing home improvements and things of that nature, which have helped a bit. But we really are struggling still with some of that lodging occupancy, which is really challenging for our hospitality businesses. And then transit ridership is a challenge. And I know that the city council and the mayor and I are probably all very excited to see that the American Rescue Plan has been rolled out and we're waiting guidance for that to see how we can make sure that that continues forward effectively as we look forward to 2022. So I think I'm right at time. I haven't seen any signal yet, but that's what I had to present today.
Unmeet myself. There we go. So thank you, Allison, for that information. There is a lot there. I think I'd need a couple primers on that to take all that in. We're going to move now on to the city council president, Brooke Carlson, and council member Nick Campion. And they'll provide stories, case studies, and discuss on split screen how the two of you have personally championed issues or seen issues forwarded through city processes. Brooke and Nick will provide us with useful tips for local residents who want to be effective on issues. So go ahead, Nick Campion and Brooke Carlson, thanks.
Sure. Thank you so much for having me. Thanks for the introduction, Anna. It's good to be here with my new colleague, but longtime colleague and friend, Nick, to share some examples. I'm obviously brand-new on council, so I don't have as much to talk about as him, but I will share a few things. And he will also dive into some really good examples. So first of all, just, it's wonderful to be council president. It's wonderful to be at a League of Women Voters event where I'm not debating and don't have the pressure and stress of going through that. You've got me here. I'm in the leadership role and so pleased to be in this role. It's really such an honor. So just so you know, council president is a little bit different than my colleagues. You probably know this, but basically I'm the at-large or for our whole community representative on council like our mayor is. And besides facilitating the meetings and managing the council during meetings, I sit on the DMCC board. I am the chair of the Olmsted County Justice Commission. I'm the vice chair now, thanks to the mayor suggesting so, of the Airport Commission. And I sit on the Ready Board, the Rochester Area Economic Development Incorporated Board as an ex-official member. So I'm deep into the world of economic development in my role right now and just learning a ton, building wonderful relationships and really trying to get my head around the opportunities to make good policy changes to improve our community. So we are, as a council, about to dive into a strategic planning process. We started on Monday. It'll go for a few months and we will be using that process to identify our strategic priorities as a council that will then tie to our budget planning process that Allison just went through. So if you are particularly passionate or have strong opinions about issues in our community, this is a great time to be reaching out to your ward representatives or me or the mayor to talk about what you care about, whether it be supports for people experiencing homelessness or affordable housing or clean energy, whatever the issue is that you are committed to and have expertise or perspective on, this is the time. We are right in the thick of starting these important conversations. So both Nick and I have our ear to the ground and are really listening to what's important to our community. And I am very, very committed to bringing our community perspective into my decision-making. So that is my little point of encouragement. Nick will talk more about tips at the end of our presentation. But we decided that we would focus on two issues today, social justice and animals. So I'm going to start with social justice. And again, I'm new, so I'm talking about two of the things that we have accomplished in the last couple of months that I'm really passionate about, but looking forward to many more accomplishments in the months and years to come. So because I've spent a lot of my career working on issues of equity and because I am a granddaughter of a Holocaust survivor and personally have whole sections of my family tree missing because of hate and extremism, I knew that this was an important time in our community to take a stance against hate and extremism. After the events in January and this week with what's going on against our Asian-American community members, it is very important for our city to stand strong with our communities of color, with our multicultural communities, and have a stance that says, we will not stand for, we will stand against hate, we will stand for our democratic process and fair elections, we will stand against misinformation. So I've worked deeply in the community and knew that this, in late January, was a time that we could bring something forward for the council to consider around taking the stance against hate. So I worked with the mayor and our city attorney. I worked with the Anti-Defamation League and nonprofits across our community to figure out what type of language we might consider taking on here locally that reflected the national context, but took what was happening specifically in our community and what we stood for specifically in our community and made it relevant. So we went through several iterations of language. We worked with the attorney to figure out what the best approach was to presenting some language to the council to consider and decided that we would put forth a proclamation for unity that stood for these different pieces against hate and extremism and standing for our for our fair elections and like I mentioned before. So the mayor was wonderful and working together to decide that we were going to do a joint proclamation, which is not very commonly done. The mayor makes a lot of proclamations, but the council decided, we decided that it was worth the council considering as well. So I read the proclamation and invited my council colleagues to make a motion to sign on. They did so unanimously and then we invited the mayor to sign on as well. So we now have a joint proclamation for unity, which again is against hate and extremism and for fair elections and against misinformation among some of the highlights that our city, our mayor and our council has signed on to and will really continue to be a reference point and a point, a foundation to stand on as we commit to advancing equity and inclusion and making sure that our community is a welcoming place for all who live here and call Rochester home. So that's one example of engaging with our nonprofit community and diverse voices to lift up a policy or a proclamation that we could adopt together as a council and mayor. That's my first example and I'll hand it over to council member Campion to share something of his own and then he'll pass it back to me.
Council President Carlson is always well-prepared. And I always am kind of shocked at how we say five minutes and she's right on the spot, exactly five minutes to hand it over. And as we were talking before joining today, everyone reminded me of how I tend to ramble on. So I did prepare some examples. But I want to talk about one that I think illustrates how as individuals, when we see something and say something about how we think the government should act and how ordinances should be written, you can have that impact even if you're not expecting it and maybe not in the ways that you're anticipating. So in my first term, I got an email out of the blue from a parent who lived within the ward. And the subject was the chicken coop ordinance. And for those of you who might know, we have ordinances about a lot of stuff. But one of those things is keeping chickens in coops on property within city limits. So apparently, historically, there's been issues with people not living neighborly next to each other with some of these chicken coops. But the real reason that this resident was reaching out was they actually were raising ducks. And it turns out, the way our ordinance is written, the chicken ordinance had just kind of been cut and pasted and the word rooster replaced with the word drake and the word chicken replaced with duck. And so, you know, everyone likes to think sometimes that there's like grand theory behind every law. And you can think that when you see things like, you know, our federal legislators that have to get 10,000-page bills with an hour to read them and to pass them, that, you know, there's a lot going into those that people, everyone has a little piece they're really interested in. I would say in this case, what we probably had is someone saying, but I can't keep ducks. So we cut and paste the chicken ordinance to try and give them a way to do it. Unfortunately, there was a lot of like gotchas about this. Like ducks don't like living on top of concrete and they don't like raised roosts versus ground-level roosts. And there's some like false equivalencies that happen when you do cut and paste. Like raising a Drake duck is not the same as keeping a rooster. They're very kind of different domesticated animals. So we had this talk and as I got to learn more about the situation, it was a really unique opportunity. They had started out raising ducks to teach their children about how to how to kind of take responsibility. And I said to myself, like, what a great opportunity to work with a family who's obviously very interested in this kind of, you know, niche, I'd say small impact, but also to demonstrate like when you decide you need a change, like you can make this change. So we kind of walked through it and we drafted some language. We changed up a few lines in the ordinance. And then um, when it is something that is, uh, you know, maybe not impactful to the whole city, but certainly impactful to this family, uh, it was just really exciting to see that, you know, take shape and be passed all within the span of about a month. So right, a month can seem long. We only have two meetings. So the way it works is we had to have two meetings to pass anything. But we really had this exciting time and I think the opportunity for the council to learn about um, kind of how our ordinances around animal uh, animal maintenance and, and how they can be housed all had really kind of key impacts for families around our community. So uh, that to me was one of these examples where you see something, you know, the saying or on airports, you see something, you say something. When you see something that you don't feel is working well for your community, you're usually not alone. We're not always going to agree on the best way to fix that, um, but I do think that there's really interesting kind of ways to see those things, engage your council member and uh, try and make that change happen. So that was one example that when we started talking about how people get involved in that change and how we see kind of champions in the community stand up. It can be something big for sure. And I think the example of a unity agreement is something big and powerful. And it can be something that maybe is small and I think small still can have an impact for those families. So it was a good opportunity to work uh, kind of directly with the community, roll up our sleeves and, and make some changes. Council president, I'll pass it back to you. Yeah, sorry. I have to work on our segues.
Yeah, clearly. No, kidding. So also building on this, this idea of supporting animals and animal wellbeing. Before or while I was campaigning, I was contacted by the Animal Main Society of the U.S. and a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens here in Rochester who are very, very passionate about banning exotic animal performances. Now, this is sort of an interesting topic because like Nick said, it, it's one that came forward from a small group of people who brought this idea to our, um, several of the council members' attention. It maybe wasn't on my radar as something that we would do early in our, um, in, or at least in my tenure on the council, but absolutely aligned with my priorities of um, respecting our, our earth and our fellow living creatures. So it, it was sort of one of those things we listened to. We, a couple of us thought it was an important topic and something we would consider. But an interesting turn of events is that everything is very interconnected. So right away in, I think, January, we were presented with our fee schedule. So all of the different services that Allison mentioned that the city provides, um, were not all of them, but many of them have see, I have fees associated with them. And a couple of us saw that there was a circus fee. And so it felt like, okay, well, this is a moment to at least open the conversation that we care about. We know that our residents are, are worried about and interested in. Uh, so we were able to open the conversation and I know it, it was a little disjointed in how it happened, but it was the right time. There was the right energy and momentum. It was sort of unexpected, but it allowed us to have an initial conversation, actually. Yeah, an initial conversation where we could then ask our city attorney to bring, to draft and bring back a resolution within our bounds as a city, and I'll talk about in a second. It would ban exotic animal performances on city-owned property. So we, we needed to acknowledge sort of what our, what our role as a city government is, where the opportunity to make a policy change that may not be the very best case scenario that covers everything. And no exotic animals will ever be allowed within our, within our city. But it was an important step forward that our community was asking for to be a leader among a few communities in our state to take a strong position on. So that also came back to our council as a, as a resolution that passed unanimously. I, yeah, it passed unanimously. And is now something that through my very deep commitment and priority to collaborating with our county, we're able to talk about as whether or not the county decides to do anything with it. This is where the city stands on this issue. And in order to truly advance um, our restriction of exotic animals within our county, the county then would need to take action. So the group of committed citizens who also of course lives in Olmsted County can then shift their advocacy to working with policymakers at the county level to expand, to at least consider expanding that policy to affect county grounds. So it's sort of a um, interesting example of citizen advocacy using a um, sample policy or, or learnings from other communities to say, this is happening elsewhere. There's good energy. Can our community be a leader? And we know what the city can accomplish. And it's only so much, but at least it's a step towards what we're trying to accomplish as a greater county or, or state. And so then they can say, well, Rochester adopted this and would the county consider adopting it? So there's sort of, I'm, I, we were hoping that there would be a few examples of how policy change can happen and how citizens can highlight important issues that may not be right in the strategic framework of what the city focuses on or is on our current agenda, but can still fit within our existing priorities and within um, what we as council members want to hear from you and want to prioritize as we are committed to knowing community needs and interests. So that was what I had for today. And Nick, were you going to wrap us up?
Sure. So um, one of the things I'm always reminded of is uh, Commissioner Cascaden with the county did a presentation about how kind of advocacy with elected officials works. And I always found it like really insightful, um, especially in the context of understanding where um, maybe your local legislators, whether they're city council people or at the county, at the state, where they're at with an issue, like, and, and I, I don't, I don't want to do a time check. Do we have uh, 10 minutes or so left? Is that the, okay, thanks. Sorry. I'm super sensitive to going over again. But you know, understanding where your, your legislators are at, at any level is really critical. And I, there were several phases and I'm not going to do it justice and we should definitely uh, get a recording of that because it is excellent. But this idea that the, your advocacy follows a, a, a journey. And sometimes you're there to educate, sometimes you're there to advocate. And you know, sometimes you're there to kind of help instruct. And, and then I, what I've found a lot locally is the breadth of something like the city government is so large that you can have a very esoteric problem in a part of the government that um, your council member might not have engaged in, in the last six months. And so if policy, if practice, if um, the city staff, if things have changed, you can have to, you sometimes have to spend that time getting them to understand both what's the state of our problem, but also your kind of unique perspective on why is this a challenge? And so I've always found like, um, the style of advocacy that works on me is how, how do we, uh, how do you put me into your shoes? Like, help me understand why this is a day-to-day impact. You know, one of the issues I haven't been able to get traction on, but I've worked historically on is things like uh, parking limits on the, the streets. We, you know, a lot of people don't know there's a city ordinance that limits the time a vehicle can be parked on the streets to eight hours. But there's like these challenges with that for a lot of uh, workers in our community that have to go to work, that have to take a bus, that have to pick up their kids. Um, so there's interesting kind of advocacy that where people come in and explain to me why this doesn't work for them. I had one person tell me about, you know, they work 12-hour shifts. So if the limit is eight hours, like that is not congruent with how their work shifts work. We've continued to kind of revisit this to try and find an alternative. I'll say it's not always easy. I think like that's the second piece. There's this advocacy for um, understanding the problem or there's, sorry, there's this education piece of understanding and kind of sharing that sympathetic view to your problem. There's always the second piece, which is how do you fix it? And I find that like, a lot of advocacy can get broken when you are absolutely um, 100% by a single way to fix it. What's important in my mind to realize is if I was king, probably a lot of things in Rochester would work different, right? If any one of us was a, the only person that mattered, we probably have a lot of opinions and be able to execute them overnight. But I share the governance responsibility with seven other people. And so understanding that just because you have a preferred solution, that doesn't always mean that that's viable. When I have to get seven other people to agree on how to move forward. I've found that, you know, coming in with the flexibility to both be an advocate, but also to listen to kind of the reality or to listen to feedback about the perspectives that are shared on the council has been really a critical, um, kind of a critical skill for people getting stuff passed. You know, as I, you know, a perfect example of this, we've continued to kind of review. I have, I'm super passionate about sidewalk district pay, or sorry, paying for sidewalks through districts. It hasn't, again, it's one of those things where every time a constituent comes and tells me about a challenge they're having paying for sidewalk repair, I get frustrated. Um, but there's a reality on the council of until uh, you know, three other council members and a mayor or five other council members, if the mayor uh, isn't on board, as until we kind of can get consensus, we have to be willing to work together to find that. And so uh, what I've been really proud of during uh, you know, all my the, the length of tenure and all of the people I've managed and been able to serve on the council with is that willingness to be congenial and to talk to each other and to try and say, even if you disagree with me, is there some way we can structure a solution to this so that we can move forward in a way that's positive to the city? I, I, I think between those two things and, you know, certainly being sensitive to kind of the broad swath of the city and the areas where we may see your problem and we may understand your problem and we still may not be able to immediately take action to solve it. And that can be a really frustrating experience for a resident. You know, my own family members coming up and, and wondering why we haven't fixed X yet. Like the, the answer is like, there's um, only so much capacity as a city. And oftentimes we have to tackle kind of what is the most emergent problem at the minute, right? So we have these priorities. Everyone comes in with a set of priorities. We have to figure out how to work together because everyone having seven different sets of priorities doesn't work. So what we have to do is kind of figure out how to elbow each other and to get comfortable and to get into a stride where we can all work on problems together. So uh, you know, the final kind of tip here is uh, going and just talking to your council member can't, isn't always, um, isn't always the most advantageous. Sometimes what you want to do is talk to your, maybe your, your ward representative. And then to work with uh, your ward representative to go talk to other council members. Cause sometimes having that personal advocacy uh, can be the most kind of uh, the most, uh, the highest rated champion you can be is probably for your own cause. So those are some of the tips. Hopefully that helps. Um, I heard that we have uh, three pages of questions. So I'll stop rambling if I'm uh, spurring more. So that, that was kind of what we had prepared today. Hopefully uh, that's exciting and hopefully it kind of encourages you to get out there and reach out to your elected officials. And I think we'll pass it back to you.
I have one, I have one more comment. Just wrap it up very quickly, Anna, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Building on what we've talked about, and my six-year-old just screamed in the background, I apologize. Is this idea that we have um, seven council members and a mayor who pay atten, I mean, who are reading your communication, who are listening to your voices. I, I read every message while I may not respond promptly. I am listening, processing, trying to figure out how to incorporate your voices into how I'm dealing or, or making a decision on something. So please do reach out, whether it's sending a note to Nick because he's your ward rep and he's seeing me as council president, just so you have two voices in the mix that, you know, I think that's a, a good approach too. So please do reach out when there are important issues that either long-term, down the road, big picture priority issues or something that's on the agenda next week. It really matters to hear your voices. Thanks, Anna.
Yeah. Thanks Brooke and Nick for um, your stories and uh, case studies and examples. And now we'll move on to our Sarah Strauss. Um, she's a high school student, youth commission member and representative uh, on the library board. She'll discuss uh, what she's observed and participated in as a member of the library board. And she may also describe how youth commissioners have advanced issues uh, through the city council or other city boards and commissions. So welcome Sarah. And I think we have to unmute you. So you can get, okay, there you go.
Yeah. Thank you so much for having me. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much to Anna and the League of Women Voters for having me here today. As Anna kindly stated, I am a senior here at John Marshall High School in Rochester. And I'm also an executive member of the Rochester Olmsted County Youth Commission and a youth representative on the Rochester Public Library Board. Um, but before getting into my experience, I'd like to say that I am so grateful that the city council has supported a youth commission for about 28 years now. And to me and the rest of the commission, it really illustrates the commitment to youth participation in our community, decision-making, and that both the city and the county have recognized the importance of a youth-led commission that represents teens from all walks of life and a range of issues impacting people of all ages in our community so that they really represent our community. And first I'd like to talk about my experience as a youth representative on the Rochester Public Library Board. Um, I'm also so grateful to the library director Audrey Batcher and the rest of the library board for really recognizing the importance of youth voice um, in such an integral part of our community and really making a commitment to supporting all members of our community in order to find how best to serve them. We all know that uh, this year has been like no other, um, for everyone in Rochester, but especially the youth having to transition to completely online school, uh, managing family and school responsibilities. And the deterioration of mental health at such an important stage in our lives. Um, and so I'm so grateful to have been able to kind of show my perspective as a young person in Rochester, dealing with all of these issues and the specific issues from this year, but also knowing that um, the library's commitment extends much farther than just this year. And they've had uh, youth members for um, a long time here. But knowing that uh, especially this year, the importance of my role is just so much more amplified. Um, and I've been able to participate in discussions that are really essential to the day-to-day operations of the Rochester Public Library. Understand um, all the different parts of being a board member of the operations of the library, of each of the different departments. And it's been truly fascinating for me, um, as someone who loves going to the library, loves reading and having such a great resource so close to home. So learning about that has just been truly fascinating. And it's also been very meaningful to me, making sure that the issues of the youth in Rochester are really being discussed and are being um, put at the forefront of all of the library's policies. Whether those are discussions on equity, um, making sure that students have access to um, either devices or network connectivity that they need to join their classes. All things that uh, the library board and um, library staff members have been addressing as well as the work in a multitude of other sectors within Rochester. So I have been truly thankful to have been able to take part in such um, an important part of our community, not just to me, but to all the youth of Rochester. Now I think I'll move on to um, specifically my work on youth commission. And just to provide a little brief background, um, if any of you haven't heard of youth mission before, uh, our mission is to include um, any interested youth in our community in all of our initiatives. Um, and over the years, thousands of Rochester's young people have participated in youth commission-sponsored opportunities, events, and initiative, which really to me speaks about um, how Rochester views its youth, um, not just as someone that they need to uh, kind of be controlled or um, kind of have specific policies for, but to really tailor the policies for what youth in Rochester really need. And get there by working with youth and hearing from directly them, uh, the most important issues facing you. We are a cross-section of Olmsted County teens, representing the wonderful diversity of cultures and ethnicities in our community, uh, including members including members from John Marshall, Mayo, Century, Lured, Byron High Schools, as well as the Rochester STEM Academy. So really, a large group of people who are truly passionate for change. And I will talk about a little bit later what that has led us to do specifically at the city level. We are also an intergenerational group and our membership is currently at about fifty-eight people. So, eight members who are adults whom we work with as equal partners. So really having a youth-led commission that focuses on issues that we care about and that we choose to take action on. So it's really about empowering youth in Rochester. To give you a sense of recent city initiatives, we are partnering this year with the Rochester Public Works Environmental Services on the We Are Water exhibit this spring. And as well as over the years, we have worked with Megan Moller on the Rochester's transportation planning. She's met with us several times for input into the planning process. We have also worked with Kevin Bright, Rochester's DMC's Director of Sustainability. And he has been enormously generous in his time over the past few years, helping us really target our sustainability efforts. And most recently, last fall, he and Lauren Jensen met with us for input on the Rochester Sustainability Plan. And they are due to meet with us again in either March or April at our meetings for an update. And one of my peers, Youth Commissioner Salma Abdi, is serving as a youth representative on the Sustainability Planning Committee. So really showing that connection between the city and youth in Rochester and having a direct voice, not just whether that is listening sessions or surveys, but really giving us an equal seat at the table. We know that we don't have necessarily all of the experience or academic qualifications, but we're here to learn and we're truly passionate about the issues that we are taking action on, all the ones that I stated above, and also ones that are coming in the future. Most recently, we, a couple of us have attended the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, which I personally found an incredibly inspiring event. Of course, this year, it was entirely virtual, but still being able to connect with youth and their cities all around our nation was incredibly, not only inspiring, but also giving us the tools and skills that we need to take action on projects that we've already been moving on, but also ones at even greater levels. We've been working on a couple of state-county projects, which some of my peers will be talking about later in the Know Your Local Government presentations, but also just getting to know how everything works in the city. We are, most of us relatively new to this, we haven't had years of experience on these types of boards and commissions. And so, giving us a chance to really learn and figure out the inner workings of these things that are such important decision-making areas within our lives and that impact us so much. So, that has been incredibly wonderful experience. And again, those have been really a variety of other projects. So we choose really ones that we find are the most pertinent to our current areas. And specifically, we have several committees, right now, environmental, we had a voting rights committee. We also have mental health committees and we've been launching projects that are specific to our day and age right now. So, working with mental health in the time of COVID, which, as I said earlier, has been really uniquely affecting youth in our city, as well as again, a variety of other projects. And I'm truly thankful for being given the chance to speak today to tell you all about how much we really value your input and how much we really value being given a seat at the virtual table here. And I guess what we're kind of doing with that seat. We're here to learn and to develop those skills and to really understand the processes that really impact us on a day-to-day basis. But we're also here to represent the most important things that are impacting us. We can't expect to know everything that is affecting everyone in our community. And I mean, we can't expect you to know everything that's affecting all of us. So I think having those conversations, making sure that we are really understanding and giving everyone a voice at the table has been truly eye-opening for me and inspiring just for the continuation of our partnership here. And I know that we are running close to our time here and I want to make sure that we have plenty of time for questions. And before I leave, I'd just like to leave you with this quote that I found particularly inspiring from Makana Nelo Ramaholi, who's a co-founder and director of the Development and Leadership Center, which is a young women and girls organization in the South O. And she just says that young voices matter because they are the only way to rectify the injustices youth suffer and continue to suffer due to being excluded in decision-making. And that it is through these voices that they can become fully empowered to become leaders in their own right. So thank you for giving me this opportunity and for giving youth all around Rochester and Omsford Academy these opportunities to become our fully empowered leaders in our own right.
Thank you, Sarah. I'm so delighted that the youth commission and you all are involved in so many aspects of city and county issues. That's great to hear. So thank you for joining us tonight. And also, thanks Allison, Brooke, Nick for participating tonight and thank you for your service to our community. We're going to move on to questions and there's a lot of them. And so, just want to reiterate that in the chat box, there's the link for the city of Rochester. And if you want to contact any of the city council, the council president directly, please click on that, you'll find their contact information. I have contacted the city council member and the mayor and the president. And I, it's amazing how responsive our leaders are. Sometimes you have to send them a second email, but they do respond. So, and, and are very helpful. So, go ahead and contact them if you have questions because we're not going to get to all the questions tonight. I'm going to start with our first question. And I, this you can ask, answer specifically and then maybe also more broadly in general. And this is for Allison, Nick, and Brooke. Why are the zoning changed on the apartment complex over by the Century High School in the empty lot behind Quick Trip? It has been zoned as a one-story commercial building and there's a proposal to change it to a three-story sixty-six unit apartment complex. There is a concern that it would adversely affect the neighborhood as it may involve closing or limiting access on a road. How is that allowed? And also, you know, address it both specifically and more broadly. Who would like to start? Nick?
I love zoning. So, I've been, before I served on the council, I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for about six years. So I've been in city zoning challenges now for about thirteen years. I'm not going to address it specifically. So, this is a quasi judicial, which is a huge way of saying it's a legal process that this is going through. And unfortunately, because of, well, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on which side of this you might fall on. If we start specifically weighing in, we would be violating the due process of the person who's put in the application. So whenever people send me emails, and a lot of people have been sending emails, you'll find that my responses typically, I don't meet with, I don't meet with project applicants. A lot of, I just find if we're going to level the playing field, I'm going to kind of not meet with project applicants. I also don't comment on applications that are pending before the council because we can get in legal trouble. It can look as though the city's already made a decision on something and then we get sued. And one thing that happens to cities all over America a lot is they get sued a lot. So it's just best, I think, if we don't weigh in specifically on this one tonight, I know it's on a lot of people's minds. But I think in terms of keeping all of us, and frankly, protecting the city that we all care about a lot from lawsuits and from other challenges, the best we don't weigh in specifically. I'm going to talk more generally, if I could, for like maybe two minutes about this and I invite my colleagues to weigh in if they don't feel I do a good job. All over our community, we are going through substantial change. I think in the time I've served on the council, we did a master planning project for the entire community called the Comprehensive Plan. And one of the aspects of that is to look at what does the future of living in Rochester look like? Part of what you will find in our comprehensive plan is we've tried to anticipate a lot of the needs of the community in terms of housing, and we did that along a number of accesses. One of the most important being housing affordability and housing access. There's an oft and recently updated report called the Maxfield Study, which talks in great depth, frankly, more than I could accurately recreate for you in our short amount of time, but talks in great depth about the essential needs of our community for access to all types of housing. At the same time, I think as a document, the Comprehensive Plan does a good job of anticipating that wherever we start to see changes, there is conflict. I will say, in my time on the council, zone changes and where we've done kind of up-zone, where you've done conditional use permits, there's always a bit of discussion, let's say. There's always a bit of understanding by the residents and, and the developer about what the expectations are. So, I, I, you know, when people tell me there's a hot-button thing coming to council, you know, we, we do see these, they do tend to like have kind of that nature about them. My request to everyone involved is to realize that there's a legal process taking place. It is, there's a lot of opinion about it, but there is certainly a very clear requirement of the city council, a legal obligation, both to the city and the state to execute this fairly. And so oftentimes, people will not like how we can't speak publicly about it. But as we have done in that document, I think if you look at those, those kind of foundational documents we use to plan the city, they should give you a feeling of where we see a perspective for housing, where we see a plant perspective for zoning going. So you can look at those and kind of understand with the background information we use to drive it. You can understand the process, which is documented in the Land Development Manual. And then what we're responsible to do is listen to all the public commentary, to all of the emails that come in, to all of the, you know, discussion that happens at the council meeting. And then we have to really wait until we've collected all that information and taken all that feedback in to make that decision. There's specifics to this one that I just think, on a, for, for the sake of my colleagues, I'll, I'll take the, I'll take the initiative here to say we can't get into them. It would just likely cause us legal problems if we weigh in too deeply. So at this point, you know, I hopefully can provide a little bit of guidance. But I'm sure we'll have a long and thorough discussion about it when it comes in front of the council.
Okay, did it, did Brooke or Allison want to comment on that? Probably not. No.
I would just say thank you to Council Member Champion for his comments.
Okay, thank you. Can people attend the Planning and Zoning Committees if they want to, to see what's coming up and to get an idea?
Yeah, not only can they, by, by state law, they are open, public and trans, they're broadcast over the internet. Well, we do that, but they're available online as well if you don't have time to make it to the council meeting and they're recorded, so you can review them in arrears.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. So, I'm going to ask later a question about the land use manual, but I think what I'll do is ask more specific question about another issue. This question is, I live on a cul-de-sac, we don't get powed unless it's greater than three inches of snow, which we did get powed this last snow. This is not my question, but why is that? And I think I'll go to Brooke or Allison this time, if you have.
I do not know. Allison, have you learned that yet?
Well, I don't know about the specific cul-de-sac, but three inches of snow on a residential street is likely to melt sometimes before we're able to get to your residential street, especially if it's warmer out. If it's in the middle of the winter. So we prioritize street plowing, just like every other city, well, most cities that are functional in America, to be able to focus on our arterials and our collectors. So the busiest streets are always going to be done first and we keep those clear. And that's for public safety, public health, making sure that major routes are available for emergency incidents and major travel. And then we go out to all of the other residential streets that have less traffic and have less challenges, less speed, less potential for emergency, you know, emergency activity because of a major pileup or something of that nature, where you can go slower and take your time and get out. And so it's really the prioritization of the streets. So, I would say we plow every street unless, of course, your cul-de-sac is a unique situation within the city of Rochester that is not a quasi-public street or something of that nature. But maybe Mr. Champion is aware of this particular cul-de-sac.
I passed the policy. So, the, the challenge actually is that we have a large number of cul-de-sacs. And they, I think it's exactly what you said, I'll just only add, like, there's a prioritization that happens. And what we have found is, they, it's very costly, frankly, the amount of time we spend in cul-de-sacs is very significant. And they're hard to plow and they cause, the plows cause wear on the cul-de-sacs as well. So, there's a preservation aspect, there's a aspect of prioritization. And the prioritization's really, I think Allison kind of hit it, I just want to make sure it's clear. Like, if we are doing a through-street, all the drivers that use it get impacted. So getting that clear is really, you know, has a huge impact to the amount of drivers that are going through it. Where we get to these cul-de-sacs, we really need to start focusing on, one, how do we clear the, to the driveways? But also, how do we avoid having to have the, the plows do five or six-point turns to get through? Which has been, you know, critically a real-time cost as we've tried to get out in emergency situations and clear the roadway, so.
Okay, so we're going to stay on the streets. And this one is, could you please address the policy of odd-even parking, winter parking? And why is it for seven months? And Brooke?
You will find that I am not a deeply detailed person, so for policy specifics, I turn to my administrator or staff with expertise on the matter.
So I was not here when we drafted this, there's, I've worked in a number of communities that have a variety of different ways of doing this. The odd-even is similar to the conversation about plowing because we're talking about snow here. And seven months of the year is, was a selection that was made by the city of Rochester, likely based on snowplow data and how often we need to actually be out plowing based on the season for snow and making sure that we don't start and stop something. So people are aware that, you know, during these months, you're in an odd-even situation. There are a number of ways of doing this, all of them involve major impacts to anyone that is a person that parks on the street. Because to clear the street from curb to curb and get going and not have your street be three feet wide by the end of a season of snow like we had last year, not this year, but last year, it requires us to really clear the streets and go with all of those plows and, and get it going. So the alternatives to that are things like the, the snow emergency. But typically, even that is challenged because we're plowing the whole time before the snow emergency in order to clear as much as possible for travel. And then during a snow emergency, you're clearing from curb to curb so that you can keep the street wide. So it's, it's one option in a, in a toolbox of options that, all of which require you to move your car at some point. And this one requires you to go odd-even rather than do the whole street at once, clear everybody, have everybody park everywhere else, and then bring them, your, all of your cars back. So they all involve moving your car in order to plow with snow.
Okay, thank you for that. So, and now this is for, what is the status of the revision of the land use manual? And also maybe explain what the land use manual is. My understanding is that somewhat, it was developed like twenty or thirty years ago, at least the most recent one, I don't know. And that it kind of determines how the city will look, how it's laid out. But I will start with, who would like to start with?
I'll just start it with the big picture. Oh boy, my child just walked in. So, hi, I'm a mom on city council and it's almost bedtime.
This is part of all of our lives.
Yeah, thank you for being gracious. So, the, I think I was at JM when the land use or the land use manual was developed. So it was like the late nineties, right? Ninety-five, ninety-seven, a long time ago. And it has needed to be updated and consolidated and made more user-friendly for a long time. But as Nick mentioned, we recently redone, well, before I started, but certainly during his time, recently redid the comprehensive plan, which is sort of the foundational plan by which our city which is sort of the foundational plan by which our city functions. So everything else we do as a city is layered on top of that comprehensive plan. So in order to actually implement our comprehensive plan, the land use manual, what we're now calling the Unified Development Code, because it's a consolidated, refined, more cohesive and clarified version of the land use manual, is what will help us actually interpret and implement what's in that comprehensive plan. So I'll let Allison or Nick talk about like what the actual, where it's at. It's moving along, but I, I can't remember the exact next step, but we'll be engaging deeply with the Unified Development Code in the very near term.
Yeah, I think if I, so I love zoning. I see in the chat, Councilmember Wojcik is on, and I only knew one other council member that loved zoning almost as much as I did. But I think if you, if you look at how cities are, are structured legally, the comprehensive plan that President Carlson just mentioned, that is the document, that is the kind of thought leadership. It's not a legal document. It is the kind of visionary document of the city. It lays out a bunch of approaches that the city is taking and visions where we think we're going and how we're going to get there. The, the, the Land Development Manual, as it's currently known, or the Universal Development, UDC, the Universal Universal Development Code, is that right?
Development.
Unified, yeah, unified, universal. Anyway, it's called, it's a same, similar concept. It translates these big ideas into how many feet does your fence have to be from your neighbor's yard? And how tall can you build your house? And the idea is if you had a single document that was vision and, and specifics, it's really hard to draw the line and then people argue constantly. So what, what has been done over time is those documents have been separated. So one is a vision document and one is where, when you go to build a house or to build an apartment building or to lay a street or any of that stuff, where you go to get, kind of get those specific details. And so it's critically important because what we have right now is a plan, a twenty forty vision plan of where we're going. But we're trying to implement that with a rule set that was adopted in nineteen ninety-one. And then Councilmember Carlson, hopefully this doesn't age you too much, but I was at St. Pius Grade School. So very close to JM there, but I was, like, that, that is the era from which we're pulling, pulling these, these laws from. So it's really critical that we update that if we look to actually achieve what we set out to do, which I think this comprehensive plan that we built is probably the most future and positive vision of our city that has been painted in a great deal of time. I think it's a great document. I think it is where we need to go. And that's why, like, it's become so critical for us to be behind in the power, this, this update of the laws that will help get us there. Anyway, hopefully that answers it.
And just very quickly, task two, which is the three installments of the draft Unified Development Code is coming up on the spring. So we're actively working on that now. And then task three, which is the consolidation of those drafts is, should be coming forward and being completed in summer of twenty twenty-one. So the expectation for adoption isn't until spring twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. This next question is going to be for Sarah. What advice would you have for local residents, especially young ones, who have an issue they want to advocate for? I had an experience that I wanted to advocate for an issue and I contacted each of the council members and it was interesting. I went with some idea, but as I talked to them, each of them, you know, kind of asked questions. I did some education. They kind of directed me like what, what, you know, what I need to know more, what, you know, where they stood and keeping the door open too. Because initially it was no, kind of, but you know, keeping it open. So tell me what your experience is of advocating and for, especially someone young.
Yeah, definitely. Well, like with any issue, I would say there really isn't any straight path. Something that I have definitely learned on projects that I've been working on, even beyond just my work as a youth representative on the library board and on youth commission is that a door will open at some point. You just have to keep going until you find it. So one of my projects I've been working on since about last year this time, and it was going to be a pretty, maybe like a half a year-long project, but because of various reasons and working with local businesses who are suffering currently, just having to find new options. And so I would say, just keep going and most importantly, find people who are as passionate about it as you are and find people who will help you open new doors, find new pathways. For me, that's been my wonderful project advisor, Mary Gorfine. And so find people who, whether they are youth or adults in your community, who will help connect you to others in your community who will just lead you down more paths to advocacy, but no matter how many no's you get, as Anna was saying, and how many times you may feel discouraged to work on it. If it's something that you're really passionate about, a hundred percent keep going. You will find someone and you will find the impact that you will make will be priceless.
Thank you. And one thing leads to another. It's a process that you have to go through. And so thank you for that. And I'm going to move on to a question about redistricting. This person is interested in redistricting, wants, what part does the city council and local government play in this process? Like the city council versus the county? And how can community, community voices be heard regarding redistricting? And you, Allison, Brooke and Nick, you've all been good about kind of stepping forward with whoever has the information. So I'm going to open it up.
I, I was just talking to some county commissioners today about this and I know the city, gosh, was it last year? Nick, that the city adopted the fair redistricting policy? So I think Nick's probably the best person to start off with his experience on this topic.
Sure. So I was looking up for the text, but I'm not going to get it before I have to answer. So the answer is that the county has a pretty substantial statutory role. So per the state documents, this county spends, has a specific role to draw districts. From the city's standpoint, we, we have asked essentially that districts that are drawn around the city. Let me step back. Nationally, I believe that gerrymandering is a serious issue. I don't, there has been concern raised historically about how that has impacted elections all over the country. What the city passed was some legislation to try and say that, you know, our, our stance is that districts that impact the city should be drawn fairly. And that they should work to give our citizens' representation. That we shouldn't, what has happened in other states, frankly, is that cities will get subdivided to the point where their impact is diluted. And that has not given our citizens' representation in those cities anyway. So there's always these games and I think what we tried to pass was just a message saying, you know, our goal is to have all of our citizens represented fairly. The language is fairly specific and probably a bit esoteric, so I won't go too deeply into it. But the overall objective is that every vote in the city of Rochester should count. And that we want to see all of our populations represented fairly and their votes impactful in their leadership and in democracy. So I think we should all want that. And so that was the kind of genesis of some legislation we put together to try and encourage our state, county, state and federal leaders to do that and say, you know, we're willing to put our capacity behind making that happen. There's not necessarily a direct statutory responsibility, but we would like to see that done. I just want to say I did call in, I think this was like early two thousand sixteen, I have called for expansion of the city council. I, I do think it's something we should consider as we continue to kind of see the needs of the community expand. I, I still stick by that. I think that there's good reason to consider that. One of the opportunities would have been when we did the redistricting, introduce a new, a new district. It just didn't seem like the timing was right. We had a few other challenges taking place as a city. So we unfortunately kind of missed the window, but you know, I do think that there's a lot going on with districting. Yeah, frankly, and since I know that the city's responsibility is mostly on ensuring fair representation, fair representation for our citizens. I've kind of stayed out of the mechanics of it and I think, you know, our colleagues at the county are probably underway or about to start the process of doing that.
Thank you, Nick, for that information. I'm going to, because both of you, Nick and Brooke, had information about animals in your talk, there's two questions about animals that I'm going to put together and throw out there. Is, is there anything the city council can do about the large number of wild deer in Elton Hills area of Rochester? I live in that kind of area and they've come right up to my door and eaten the plants off my hanging wall basket. But that's not my question. And then also it's the one about, have you ever considered using birth control for the crow problem downtown? It's been done with success in Siena, Italy, and it was done with pigeons in Italy. So any thoughts on those two animal questions?
I'm a hundred percent ears open to anything that can control the crow population. So whoever shared that, please send me, send me whatever information you have and we'll see if we can use it. It's a mess and in many ways.
A whole committee of people from multiple organizations working on it all the time.
And we've invested, the idea, I, I will just dismiss this concept. We've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars trying to mitigate this issue. Like, it's not that the city wants to continue to see crows be a problem. It's that we have not found a successful mitigation strategy for them. So if you have information, I'm happy to pass it on to people for review, for sure. I just want to call it deer, deer and deer population management is done by the DNR. So we do have a DNR representative and if you feel like, so I don't know how many would be a problem, but the pop, the population management is done via the DNR and I'm happy to refer you and they can explain their strategies and what they can do.
And with the crows, is that, is that a combined like county-city issue or how?
It's really the city, Mayo and Rochester Downtown Alliance that are working on it together right now, I think.
Okay.
Right, Allison?
Yes, for the crows.
Yeah.
And the next question, if you get a fee for snow removal or mowing the lawn, do you know, is there an appeal process? And is that, and that's county or city too? I would get, guess it's city.
That's a Nick question. He, as a word represent, as the council president, I don't hear so much about individual issues like that, but Nick, I think.
I'm going to start sending them all your way. Make sure it's more fair. Yeah, there is an appeal process. It's actually stipulated on the fine notice you get. I'll just go ahead and put a plug in for the first line of every response to every fine email I ever get, which is that no council member enjoys levying fines against citizens. That is something I absolutely wish we did not have to do. So you're going to get a sympathetic ear. And at the same time, things like snow removal and, and grass removal, we've kind of witnessed too, too often what happens if there's nothing on the other end. So happy to connect you with the, the process. It's very specific as it's a legal process and we have legal ramifications if it's not followed. So you, you can contact me. I can give you the details or if you have a fine, an unfortunate fine, you can look at that and it usually has an indication on there.
And we're coming up to eight thirty, which is kind of my limit for Zoom meetings. So I have one last quick question. If I don't like the property tax on my property, how do I change it? Who determines and how, how can the numbers on my property tax statement? And is it county or city? How does that balance out? Nick, you go this time. Yep, or if Allison, sorry.
Well, Allison just walked through sort of how taxes are divided. Allison, you want to?
I apologize. I was looking for the snow removal information and I didn't hear the question fully.
How do we, yeah, Anna can.
If I don't like the property tax on my property, how do I change it? And who determines and how the number on my property tax statement? And is this a county or city? And how do you determine?
So typically we would have two, two-stage process this year. Your option to go to the Board of Equalization is with the county. There's an equalization factor with determining whether or not your property tax raises or lowered more disproportionately to other properties similar to yours. And your option is to go to the County Board of Equalization. There is also another step of the process for, that would have been earlier on when taxes were certified back in like the December, January timeframe, that would have already been missed regarding your, your assessment. So your actual assessed value. So when you receive your, your notification of valuation every year, there's instructions on that as well that indicate the process and timeframe. And so I always recommend contacting the county assessor's office for those because they have the most information about how your assessment was considered and can step you through the process from an assessment level. If you feel like you were disproportionately impacted relative to the type of property, there is the Board of Equalization and adjustment. And so this year that is directly to the county and they actually have a direct link on their website. If I find it, I can put it out there for you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just throw out that there's other questions that, and, and I'm just going to throw it there. Not that I want you to answer them, but there's questions about poverty rate and supporting people who live in poverty in the community. The TIF, TIF funding, and there's also on solar, about solar production as part of their buildings with commercial. Those are, other questions are out there. They, people can contact you directly if you, they have questions. Sorry that we didn't get to all the questions this evening. But eight thirty is coming up on us. So I want to thank everybody. I want to thank our speaker, Sarah, our youth involvement. Thank you for being with us tonight. Allison, our city administrator, Nick Campion, Ward Three Councilmember, and Brooke Carlson, our council president. Thank you so much for joining us tonight and sharing your insights and your stories. Because part of why we do this is we want people to be able to see what, how they can be involved in the city. And also want to give a shout out to some of the city other people. Mary Norton is in attendance. Kelly Kirkpatrick, City Council, Molly Dennis, City Council, Karen McLaughlin, School Board, and Greg Wright. I see him on the county commission. So thank you. And Mary Gorfine is here too, the youth commission leader. So I want to thank all of you for, and everybody, all the attendees that came and all the good questions. So thank you very much for joining us tonight. And I want to, this is our first in a series of Know Your Local Government. Next week on Thursday, March twenty-fifth, at seven o'clock, we will get to know our Olmsted County government better. So join us there. We will send out, you can find links on Facebook, our website. And thank you for joining us tonight and everybody have a good evening and enjoy your tomorrow, your Friday. Thank you so much.